All the meeting order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And you can very proudly, what we stand more than anything on your hand.
All right, first on our agendas. EMS department, Nancy, Jim.
The month of October is because they're always. But they, you notice they have double, they're starting to get their.
Jonathan O'Hara, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy three cents.
There's two amounts from the after that is clear question agents they.
Merchants and medical, four hundred and eighty nine dollars and forty nine cents and eighty four dollars and forty nine cents.
Any questions coming?
Thank you, Nancy. Currently, we're operating three out of our six in on. Certain intervals, ALS level. ALS staffing has changed. We now have this month of Oc- no, October. We had forty percent of day staffing. At all bases, it's two staff members, two paramedics, forty percent, which is an increase over thirty six percent last. Nine percent coverage had three paramedics, so there was one at each base. Always, there's a paramedic at NOS base one hundred percent of the time, and I'm still currently running the ALS not transport as needed basis. Transfers, we've done thirty six out of forty one requested transfers left. Which is a nice figure coming up. We've done eight in the last three days.
Did we, did you find out why those five were?
One of them, I did, one of them was a vent, I found out a couple of, one of them was a blood transfer that we couldn't transport either way. They couldn't supply enough, so I took a critical care of that. One of them was a vent circuit, it wasn't compatible without. And the other one was a one I had to go right then, everybody was on call. So that was three out of the five that I did by my own. Personnel, we've had some changes this time. We have no full-time openings for EMTs and a waiting list. We have twelve ones scheduled, we have two new part-time employees hired, two additional applications received, which are in the process. And two applications were given out in the lab last week, maybe another week. We have four current full-time paramedics as well as five paramedic full-time openings. Six new part-time paramedics were hired in the last fourteen days. There are three of them are pat, we have also three past paramedics who have returned. And we will probably be having another one return. It's cool, oh, it's even better. Training, October twenty ninth, we did a patient assessment, airway management. The next one is at the end of the month. And it's gonna be cold weather, winter operations, emergency, it's gonna include driving in the winter. Safety, unfortunately, last one was August fifth, injury was reported. Ambulance maintenance, North Judson's thirty three oh eight. Current mileage, it's up to date, forty nine twenty six, which is the used one we bought, that was the Port County rig. Went into service, came out of service to go get wrapped, it's ready, I picked it up after leaving, and goes back into service. With its new book. Forty nine twenty five, that is the brand new one. It is currently ready to be picked up this afternoon, and it goes in the service this afternoon. And then we pull the others, and we send them out to get back as well.
New one already wrapped.
Oh yeah, new one's already wrapped, it's soon as it gets back this afternoon, there'll probably be a service about one o'clock. That'd be the first time it's been out. Five fourteen. Right now, it's out of service for the emissions, again, low power, but he thinks he found the issue finally. There's a plug behind, it's an injector that puts the DPF fluid into.
The Knights injector.
Yeah, the Knights injector, which is a very far back part of the thing, so he had to tear the whole dashboard out, see where it was. Eighty five, it needs to go into the shop, it's current, but it just needs to get the rear step replaced, it's probably gonna fall off. It's rusted, it's scheduled to go at the end of the month for the step to be built. Eighty four, which is the Chevy diesel, which is currently in service at Knox Base, there's nothing wrong with that one. Not avoid, forty one forty nine, the Ford Explorer. Right now, it's had new tires, it's been serviced, it is being placed as a super paramedic supervisor. Car to take us into the next level, it's, I saw the schedule for the month of December. It's nice, it looks good, I'll show it to you later. Forty seven police staff, which is the new one, it's sitting outside. There's nothing wrong with it, it is currently in service, being used as a case car. With the base, two outside outlets still need to be installed, every time I've called somebody to do it. Everybody, nobody wants to work anymore, so. The new door entry service systems, they're here, the key cards are ready, I'm just waiting on Richter for the remaining installs, and then they'll be locked up and ready to go. Over the weekend, we were cleaning the bay, we found two brand-new interior doors in the storage area. Our storage area inside the building. Both of them needed to be replaced anyway, well, one of the doors had fallen off. Me and two of the employees replaced the doors in there, so that's done. Grants, we're still waiting on the opioid committee for power load system, which I don't think there's a meeting scheduled. We still need two of them. I did receive a grant from Indiana Department of Homeland Security for unknown amount at this time. But this grant allows us to send two, possibly three. EMTs to school, to teach their own. And two paramedics at discretion, they take the entire.
Keep an eye out for grants from FSSA and OKR.
Indiana Senate Bill one sixty nine, there's still nothing on that, but I do know that IDHS is open. They said ten to fifteen new grants for equipment, and apparently the industry falls into that grant. So that would be nice, if you did it. Every day, I'm still looking at new ones, always. Donations, we have no new ones at the time, and PP, everybody's good, but we still need wear clothes. That's probably gonna come out of the grant money that we had from before. Any questions?
Outside outlets, what do you need in there, you just need outlets?
Just need two outlets installed at each base.
Do you need a wire, or, I mean, are they there and just need?
No, we need, they need to come off the fuse box to go there, and I called Cory Bussie, and Cory said, I'll get back to you, that was a month ago.
I got a couple in mind, I'll give you.
Awesome, sounds good to me. Any questions?
I don't think so, I'm good.
We have the EMA department.
It will be by the end of the week. Got proof this morning, I didn't like a couple things, so we're gonna switch it around, and then, once the proof comes back. I like, then it'll go, then it'll be done. So I'm here to talk about the mitigation plan. The requirement by FEMA that we update it every five years, it has not been, it was wrote in twenty fifteen, I believe. Or it hasn't been updated since twenty fifteen, actually, that's what it is. So, I would like to use the grant that we already have, which is expiring, what, in April, I think, April twenty fourth. To hire Christopher Ben Engineering, who is actually here, she is who we'll be working with. The agreement, I think you guys got that.
Did you get a copy of this, Trudy? I mean, it looks pretty boring, but.
So. The fee is nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty seven dollars. The grant will take care of, it's a matching grant, just twenty five percent on us, that gets paid back by my hours that go into this, and whoever is a part of it, their hours count too. So it's not gonna actually cost us anything outside of that grant. And then, we have to have the GIS agreement signed too, so we can give them access to our map. Yes, so it is countywide, and it goes, I mean, you need involvement from like fire, from our bigger businesses, okay. Schools, everything. I would not, even if I had twenty years' experience, be confident writing it out, I am, like, it's just such a big process. This company comes highly recommended by a lot of our surrounding counties, and then when I was at EMAI. Actually, a lot of counties throughout the state recommended them, and then I actually met her at EMAI, and got to sit down and talk to her there too about it. It needs updating, this is, without this, like, it's really hard to get FEMA grants. It's very hard to even get DHS grants, they just. This benefits everybody throughout the county to have it, not to mention, it puts. One big plan for everybody to use, and everybody gets to be a part of it too, so they speak for their departments and.
We have fire department. No, roles included in the plan.
This is your mass, one massive county plan for start to finish, I mean.
If I may add, the plan is a mitigation plan, so it looks at all. Forms of mitigation, not just what is FEMA eligible. And so, it assists fire departments, police departments, health departments, all of the community as a whole. In mitigating against natural hazards. And some man-made hazards, including hazardous materials and dam failure. So, the grant that Tori has received. Is set up to have us write the plan on behalf of the county with. Port County involvement. FEMA mandates that all the incorporated communities participate. And then, we will actually come back and ask you to adopt the plan. Once it is written, there's a public comment period on it, so we really look for community input. And we're specifically, this cycle, we've been asked to focus on underserved population needs. As well as full community needs. And how do we deal with the changes that are happening in our climate right now? Getting more rains, heavier rains, we're having a lot of overland flooding in communities. As, as you're well aware, from the flood events that happened here in your community in twenty eighteen. And so, our goal is to find ways to be better prepared, to be more resilient. And help the community grow in a positive way.
So you mentioned a public comment period, what's our timeline overall on this?
Our timeline, Cory has to have it done by April, so we're working on a very compressed timeline. Normally, this is a year-long process, and we are shrinking it down to a four-month process. And comment period is normally about two weeks. We'll try to do as much work as we can simultaneously, so that we can keep the ball rolling.
Yeah, what was it, we got this grant, we got this grant actually in two thousand eighteen, but with our. History of EMA directors, it's never been worked on.
I had to turn over in the position.
Is that both for the mitigation plan and the GIS agreement?
I see into the term of the agreement, it's a completion within nine months, but you're saying four months it needs to be done, so it does provide nine, but we're doing it.
Exactly.
Because our, our grant expires in April.
Did you have a comment?
I was just curious why we were three years behind, if it's due every five years.
Like Rachel said, we switched the EMA directors.
That's, that's, he was just saying, I didn't realize that.
There's so much turnover on. They had a motion, a second, all those in favor.
That's the G I S.
Then we have a surveyor and a recorder up for his equipment request.
So, the plotter in the surveyor's office, it has some issues. It's had issues ever since I was appointed in two thousand and nineteen.
What's the nature of those issues?
It's software is outdated, and once it warms up, it doesn't wanna work.
When you turn it on, it's on all the time, but you have to turn it off. Wait five, five minutes, turn it back on, let it warm back up, and sometimes it won't boot up. Something to do with, not the software, but something internal.
Okay.
The hardware or something is not, it's outdated, and it has paper issues. Where it won't. It'll feed the paper, it'll stop, and then reject it, they feed it, stop, they quiet, reject it.
Thanks for Glenn and I one.
Sometimes you have to turn it on and off numerous times to get it to actually think and boot up properly. We have a problem with the cartridges, the ink. It tells us one thing, but it's not, there's nothing wrong.
It doesn't acknowledge.
It, it says it, it's got a little display, it tells you there's no ink, but there is ink.
So, the machine we have now was purchased used by Phil, and I'm not exactly sure, it's like probably eight, nine.
Twenty eighteen.
He had it for about eight or nine, it was eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and it was purchased used at that point.
And then you guys, whoever was aboard at the time commissioners, they have an agreement, they set a price. At five dollars for black and white, eight dollars for color. When we get the new one and everything, you come back to it, it's for an increase, but not until, if we get moving. It's up to you guys.
Okay, so the purchase price with a trade-in would be seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. If we leased it, it would be a hundred and forty nine dollars a month for thirty six months. Which includes ink, and heads cartridges. Toner paper.
You know, like a server, is there like a service contractor like?
Yeah, so if we purchased it, the first two-year warranty maintenance agreement would be nine hundred bucks, and then it would double after that.
Well, that'd be extended, yeah, to go three years out.
I don't know exactly how, you know, if you would rather purchase it, anyways, what we're asking for is for next year, not during this budget. Period.
You only got one quote?
Yeah, we only got.
Could you try to give me that?
I can try, but there's not too many companies that do this machine. But anyways, what we're asking for is whichever way you go, like, so. Either if you would purchase it outright for us, and then we would take care of maintenance. Because that's what we do right now, is we split the maintenance three ways on the one now. However, we did not appropriate for a larger maintenance B or a lease at this time for next year, so we're just asking that if you could take care of. Next year, like, if you wanna, if we wanna lease it, take care of next year's lease, or if you wanna purchase that, then we would take care of, and. You would have to take care of first year maintenance, and we would take care of it after that.
You tell me the same rate of the price, that's when someone else needs the copy?
Somebody comes in, like, the public, and they wanna copy, right now, it's five dollars for black and white, they want a color, it's eight dollars. With, with, with everything going up, maintenance, paper, ink. I'm thinking, just, if it's a black and white, it's ten dollars, if they want a color, eight sixteen, just double. I'm just trying to keep up with the times. Ahead, the, the machine, we've had, we're on a quarterly. I guess, rotation where they come in automatically, look at the machine, clean it, if it needs cleaning, if it needs any work done, they do that. That's part of the contract we have for maintenance, so like she said, we split the costs three ways. My, my office, her office, and then Bodas's office. And if we, and if we went with a newer one. It, it helps these, it helps Mandy's office, this screen, they can, we can program it to where she has her own folder. She can do everything with her on, on it, through her office. All they have to do is link it up to the computer, she can download and upload stuff, and print it, instead of having to ask. When, and come in, you know, take five minutes of waiting time to do anything she needs to do, and same thing with Bodas's office, and same thing with my office. We can all have our own folders in this, in the display, the display is a little bit bigger. Fella, or, of course, it's a little bit more updated, so.
And it'll blow a picture up, or you don't have it at this point?
Right, and it blows picture up to where you get a buyer like this, instead of eight and a half or twelve.
So we each use it differently, like he says, he prints with it, the planning commission, I think Mary was scanning in like the maps and stuff for the solar fields. She had it digital. My office, this is how we get our plots and our surveys into our actual recording system. So, in order for me to record the bigger versions of stuff, which is always the better, you know, the clear.
Surveyors and the engineers, and when they bring in blueprint, we need some big size blueprint. She feeds it in the machine, she can download it directly into their folder, where then when they're ready, they can click on their folder, upload it to their computers. Right now, we can't do any of that.
So I put some numbers in the letter, right now, we pay a hundred and thirty six dollars and thirty four cents per year for our maintenance agreement. If we purchased the machine, that first year agreement would be three hundred each office, which. I don't, I'm sure we could probably make that up. If we like, just move, you know, something around, I'm sure each one of us could do that. And then, if we lease the machine. The second year lease would add four hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixteen to each of our appropriations for that budget year, for budget year twenty twenty five.
If we go with the lease option. How likely is it at the end of that lease, that we find a new model to lease again for another three years?
Pretty good, and then we would.
I know with. Especially with HP. They tend to, you know, two, three years is about all the bill support and with, with software and whatnot, you know, I don't know. It might be a little longer and more robust with their, their plotter. Equipment, but certainly with their. With their other, other product lines, I've run into issues. And certainly, uh. Some of their practices with ink replenishment has. Not been end-user friendly. But yeah, I'd like. A little bit, like Danny said, quotes, quotes on others, maybe a little more insight on, on the process behind.
Okay, we can look around, shop on the internet.
Right, yeah, just a little more on the process behind what makes this the best model for our use case.
Okay, okay, I also have an update from our office, from the recorder submit. So, we have both of these programs going. Property fraud, we've had for a while, it's a free service to every person that owns property in Sert County. And we have these pamphlets in the office, and I'm gonna try and get it on my web page. And all you do is either scan a QR code on the pamphlet, call the number, or come into our office, and we can get you signed up for it. And it either sends you. And it either sends you a text, an email, or a. It'll give you a phone call and if anything is recorded in the recorder's office with your name on it, it's an D N alert. So, um, we are dealing with quite a bit of fraud all over the United States. Uh, with property fraud, so, um, right now in the state of Indiana, there are only three counties that don't have. A property fraud service. So, and then we just started this, um, we weren't hoping to get it out by Veterans Day, like get everybody knowing about it, but. We've had some setbacks. So, um, but everything is up and running. It's honor rewards and it's for our veterans. Um, it is also another free service, uh, they can sign up at, um. Honorrewards dot com. Yep, honorrewards dot com and they'll sign up, they'll, um, fill in a few pieces of information. And then they'll receive a card. And, um, we have gone around to, uh, Sampear, like all of Stark County and gotten businesses. To give, um, different things, there's like ten percent discounts, there's a cup of coffee, um, but all of the businesses. That we've contacted, not all of them are up yet, but we have most of Sampear and Juckson up already. On the website and it shows you what discount or what they're offering for the veterans.
That's good.
Yeah, we have one of these posters down here and we're gonna put one of these posters upstairs.
Alright.
So, thank you for the money.
Thank you. Hopefully we have some more information later next day.
Alright, if you own the south, eat the virus. Go down there when you get the chance, please that guy digging pond. If there's your problem with the county, it's just a little problem, I don't know. Who cares?
Sorry for that. Sorry. Oh, you mean, uh, the old, I heard you. When they wanna do.
I don't want to, we gotta have a drink, right? You gotta.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yes, and, yeah, yeah.
If I don't want that, your problem or the county, we gotta think we gotta do so.
Uh. I was out there talking to, uh, Jack and Pagnus.
Okay. Uh, that who's digging it?
Yes, because, uh, it's his daughter's husband's property. We get the rights and, uh, the gentleman that was, he hired to dose. Was dosing everything too close to the road, he had to go back and re-dose it, push it back away from the road.
Maybe they got it, aren't they?
He, I've been out there, it's. I'd say between five and ten feet away from the road and I looked and there's not a lot. Like it was pretty close, yeah. And it's, uh, he's moved it back and there's nothing drifting onto the road or to the next door as of right now.
Okay.
Now, I, I, now and I go out there, I just drive by an area to look. Because, and, and I did ask. Uh, Jack, if we ever needed sand for any kind of emergency for the counties, he'd be more willing to give whatever we wanted. Cause I try to keep him. He's done with his dirt.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I knew about that, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Alright guys, you're welcome.
Then we have the, um. Sheriff's Department, um.
See upstairs.
Make copies for all of you guys, and when I got one, I got one if you wanna sign it too.
Whatever's going around.
I kept one nice on occasion to sign it.
You know, I'm. But I'll be up here and it's all good.
I don't know anything about the cameras, so if you wanna talk about that, first Stanley can go.
Yeah, let's do that.
Alright, you're welcome.
Camera's been on him, I know, oh yeah, the moment, or the sheriff's department resources. But. Highway department. Got the, quote, the. Financing option, if you wanted to go with that. Uh. Total cost on the financing comes out to twenty thousand six hundred ninety dollars and a cent, that's a nineteen point three sevenths of cents. Interest charge overall, um. Still recommend we just pay it all. Go. Included a. Satellite photo of the planned installation. With a very small, sorry about that, that. Description of the. Installation on the side, I got this. From the installer. Late last week.
So they don't have a. Three hundred and sixty degree camera, we have to use four separate cameras to get a three hundred and sixty degree view?
Um. Due to the size of the garage. Having a three hundred and sixty degree fisheye camera would not have as good fidelity. For all of the areas that, that were wanted and due to the, the nature of it. There was, instead of just the total coverage, there was more just key sections in the garage that he wanted to have. So the, this four way unit, it's not actually for individual units, it's one unit that has multiple sensors inside. That's, that was what the.
But it's counting as four different cameras on the contract?
On the, on the quote, it is. Listed as one unit, it's got a different license price.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, first page, third from the bottom.
Multi sensor.
Yes.
Quad sensor, okay.
And the, the license cost for that is the third from the top on the second page. Which is again a five year licensed.
So that, yeah, that's good for every five years and.
Right, correct, with an estimated eleven and a half percent increase by the time that comes around. Just as a. Uh. Correction for inflation. When it comes from the side.
And you're saying where he wanted them pointed, we can change it, right?
It is possible, yes.
Okay. Yeah, if we get them out there and we decide it's not hitting the areas that we're, that need to be like. Compared, yeah. Wish there was a way to, it's like you got your pump mill over here. Wish there was a way to put it on that building and shoot. Over there just to watch that, you know? Instead of just.
I think I don't imagine, I don't know how far out and go that. You know what I mean?
Uh, uh, the preliminary. Walk around we had for the installation, we had decided to keep everything on that main building just for the ease of, of not having to run a very cable, so.
Yeah, but you think you could point one more Charlie's thing?
Well, they've got, it is pointed there.
Yeah, but I just didn't know.
How far out they.
Yeah, if, if, I mean, yeah, if this build, if this building plus. Light, shadow, what's over here? Well, that's something we'll have to evaluate when we get them installed. I think.
Those south facing ones are going to be four K cameras, uh, due, just due to the fact that they do have such a distance that they need to be able to capture.
But everything will be contained onsite. Because I know if some of, if they're recording in four K.
All, all recording software is on location.
Just, yeah, that would, um. We don't have a, a link from the highway garage to anything. Uh, that could handle. A single four K stream.
No, not, not necessary.
Yeah.
Who will be that then gets out of the calendar, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you can get a creative sign-ins as well, so the commissioners can.
We could do.
Yeah, a, any, any access that, that needs to, can, can talk through it and get it done.
Okay.
And, and this is, uh. I believe the preferred installation because, but just due to the nature of the highway departments and, and their. Job duties, uh, it'll be remote access for the cameras, so if they're out driving their car or something and they get the call saying something's, that happens, so they can pull up their camera. Uh, on the phone, on the camera, look at the footage, re- review footage if they need. And, uh, it has automated alerts if necessary. Uh. Can even get that down to a certain time of the day. So if. If the camera picks up motion when there shouldn't be motion that time of the day, we get a, a call out to whoever we need.
So the bottom line price for the equipment, the installation. Uh, and. Five, five year license and service agreement is. Twenty four, forty one and sixty four cents?
Correct.
Okay. That's for how many cameras?
It is, it counts as twelve, it's in nine. Nine physical cameras. Like. The one is a four sensors.
That's for. This company to do every, all the work, everything.
Yes, we, only thing is we supply the link.
You looking over this now?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything?
You know, walkie.
There is a ninety day with or without cause termination provision, I see.
This is right stuff, we're not quite there yet.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, we're on, we're right here, yeah.
But. You're doing great.
Okay. Did we get? The service contract for this before and I'm forgetting about it or?
We've looked at it, we did, very first time.
Okay.
Like we, contract with you the first time.
No, this, this, the licensing is the. The contracts.
Okay, I just don't remember seeing the license screen. But. Nothing matters that we get much of a choice. It is what it is.
So the licensing is the, is the agreement.
It's a matter.
Okay. We can make a motion on it. Actually do it.
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to accept. The. Installation of cameras for, at the highway for twenty four thousand forty one dollars and sixty four cents pending review of. License agreement.
So I can. A little favor, probably not.
Little Stanley, please, what is for the, the licensing dream?
Oh.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Tim.
You let us know on that, Justin.
Yes, yeah.
You want a good update before I ask you for money?
Yes.
Um, I did get quotes for our garbage bill, which has been increased to a thousand dollars a month out there and one of the quotes came in at half price. Um, the only problem that was with the L A P, but everybody had suggested, um. But the contract with Republic automatically renews every three years and it renewed in January of twenty twenty three. So I've got an email out now, I haven't heard back, I think probably gonna have to push to find out. If they're willing to come down and meet that price or what we have to do by getting out, what the cost would be to that, so. Save, save some money.
Right, definitely.
Yeah, cause now I wanna spend it, so, you know, this time clock system is really bold, um, we talked about it before, Stanley looked into all the software stuff, so. I'm gonna let him do that, cause I don't know.
Just the initial looking over what it would cost to get this running on our own systems, it's looking at. Just the preliminary cost of seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay, and the hosting costs two hundred a month was, okay.
For countywide.
For that, we, we can pay this company seventy five a month. And they will host it for us.
Yeah.
So, and like Stanley, I said, this initial contract is ten thousand for the, all the setup and everything, um, the pages that I marked on yours. Are just, it's the breakdown of everything that is included on there, um. And then seventy, you know, and seventy five a month, so it'd be seven seventy five a month after that initial ten thousand. Um, it does say in there too, any changes, so if there's different county policies or anything, that's all included, if they're, you know, as long as it doesn't go over like twenty five hours of work, put them together in it. Um. And if, i- it's a three year contract, so if in three years, county wants to move, like we talked about, you know, more people on there and then maybe that would be beneficial to spend that much money to. Post it for everybody, but for the sheriff's department, it's unsuccessful.
How long is it? I don't know how to get it going.
Um, they will start, as soon as we get the contracts on, they'll put us on the list, um, he said, he estimated that we could probably be up and running with it, it, by March. If we get the contracts back to them, pass that we could probably be running with it by March, cause they actually will work. Um, and it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty, it played out pretty well on that March page, but they actually work with all of us. And then train us in the individual departments, they'll train me for everything, they'll train for, you know, the jails, you know, like Nate for. The jail stuff and everything and they'll, that's all included in this price. To get us up and running, the biggest part is gonna be, you know, getting them all of our policies and pay scales and, cause they build that specifically for the way we're set up. So longer.
Hmm, one of your girls will need trained on too also, right?
Um. If we don't go countywide, no, because, uh, their department is just gonna be using it and then turning in the time clock reports, so they'll, they'll be turning in the reports every pay period. But no, we won't be in there actually.
That's, yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're so understanding.
Yeah, well, and Rachel did the demo with us and, and we're pretty good. She hears from me a lot about going back and forth with payroll reports and stuff, um, I did not renew our annual contract for the current time clock system. Uh, that was gonna renew at twenty six hundred dollars for the year. I went down to the monthly, like, we can do this, and it was only like fifty dollars and then it did not print the payroll report that we have to turn in, so at this point, we're gonna spend two hundred and fifty a month. Just to continue that until we can get this going, so the sooner we can get this in, the better off we will be, um, it's gonna eliminate a lot of the confusion and the frustration. It does service records, you know, and a lot of the state report, you know, mandatory forms, so, um, I just.
So it's ten, so it's ten grand initially and then. Ninety three hundred per year for three years?
Right.
Okay.
I saved five hundred dollars more on garbage.
Yeah.
Yeah, the posting agreement looks fine, that's the one I was saying, that's ninety day with or without cause termination. To acknowledge the, um, public. In his public access statute, which is my other concern, so that's fine too. And that's, this is mine.
I'll make the motion to accept the, um. Hosting and license agreement for. Um. The three year term. At the given price.
So we add in there, did they get started on, so they wait till April and May, June before it took it up?
Yeah, they, they have a, they have a list, they said as soon as we, I mean, you know, they have a list, they'll start building it in January. So as soon as we can get these papers turned in, if you guys sign them today, I'll have them back to them today and they'll get us on a list to get started on it, so.
For me as well.
When I got this, what, Friday?
Yeah.
He emailed it and it was looking at March where we would be, we would already be building it, but actually implementing it in March, so.
I'll say, man. What was that amount for, right? One, what was that? The ten grand initial setup and then nine thousand three hundred dollars per year for three years? We have this motion in a second, all in favor? Alright.
Can you also make a motion, and you can do the motion together, but can you make a motion where the cameras and time clock is gonna be paid from? It is wrong.
We'll repeat.
I would say keep cash out of twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I'm like, most enough, pay for it, I can cap.
So.
Alls in favor?
Alright. That for hitting one minute. It's, you're in English.
Yeah.
So who can sit on the papers?
Yeah.
Alright.
This one we need to send up.
It's, if you just wanna sign needs, you guys can keep.
Oh.
It's same.
Oh.
And we have one more thing, I have to switch, go put my corner jacket on real quick, um. We have Reefer Trailer out there, I'm sorry, this wasn't on the agenda, but Rachel said throw it out at you real quick. Um, we have the Reefer Trailer out there, that's used by the coroner's office on occasion. Um, unfortunately, we've needed to use it a few times this year, um, and. We have, it's broke down, we had a problem, the coolant was low. We had them out, or you know, Tony had people come out, filled the coolant, thank you very much, and, um. We went back, they had, um, mechanical concepts, so we do have a maintenance, a preventative maintenance agreement with. They find stuff, he calls them out often, um, they came out, they fixed it, they. Loaded the freon and stuff. Uh, added twelve pounds of refrigerant, said it was back in service, um. To be honest, it was in use and we were checking on it. You know, a couple times a day, just cause we don't use it often and it quit running. So it is down and, um, we need to get it repaired. I don't know what that is gonna cost us, I really don't, but I know right now I have a bill in my lap for one thousand one hundred and six dollars for. I don't know what that is gonna cost us, I really don't, but I know right now I have a bill in my lap for one thousand one hundred and six dollars for mechanical concepts. Um for the refrigerant, and we do not have any money in our book. So. I told Tony I was gonna read.
We gotta be fit, we gotta have it.
Yeah, and it's uh it's still looking right now, and this is not gonna fix it, this is just gonna pay the work that they already did on it.
But when they worked on it, did they say they were gonna fix it?
Said the unit, they put the refrigerant in, said checked it, found the unit low on refrigerant, supplied and added twelve pounds of refrigerant and the unit was back in service at that point. Um.
So they didn't guarantee it'll be running.
No, and I don't know, I mean, honestly, I I didn't know. To be completely honest, I didn't even know it was getting done until I got a bill handed to me, so um. Uh I have talked to Tony and stuff cuz he, you know, he works on all that with us and. Um asked him to please, if we have to do this again, we've gotta get quotes because I know. Slugs is cheaper, there's a company in Elkhart that will come down and would have done it for about half this price, but we have to pay this bill, um. So I do need to get somebody to look at it, right now it's got a ECU fault, um refrigerant error and and a coolant error on it. So.
You just got a lot to get in them quotes, cuz I've been two years.
Well, and that's it, I know it's hard to, you know, it's hard, and in this situation, you know, fortunately, we don't have to use it all the time, but we have to do. And and we've put a maintenance plan, you know, in place to make sure that we're not in this situation again. But right now we are, so if, you know, we only, we can only hold two, we only have two bodies. Um and honestly, we're getting a call every other day this month, so um. We can't really be without it.
Yeah, maybe just when you get the quotes, ask them how long for the.
Yeah, okay.
Let even a local guy in justice.
Oh, is there? Can you send me his name or anything? That would be great.
Well, where do you guys wanna pay this, so I mean, I hate paying it cuz I mean.
I think the work would be more guaranteed, right?
I hate that they charge us six hundred and thirty two dollars for a four hundred and seventy four dollar job too, but. I mean, the bill's here and I I haven't fought it out with them, Tony said that he had called them. Um, you know, but I don't, I don't wanna get behind on anything and we just don't have it in our budgets to pay, I don't have any, any money there to pay anything, so.
I mean. How did, I mean, they obviously were told to come out before, so some of the.
Tony had called them out, yeah. He runs, he had been running the trailer for us like, you know, once a month or something, which they said does need to be done more frequently than that. Um and then it just didn't get done for a bit. And then it started right up, we were good, he checked the coolant, he put some coolant in there, we were fine, then this happened, he called them out and. He came up and said, hey, I had the picture trailer, and I was like, great, and then I got the bill and I yelled loudly. Maybe a lot, even.
Yeah. We got. A little left in that for the year, right?
You have a, so you have an eight thousand dollar appropriation still left, plus twenty five thousand dollars, that's gonna be additional appropriation time with the council because that was. For the purchase of the ambulance, so you have cleared some.
They must pay that bill on Kim Cap. Second. All in favor.
That's the fun number you need to put on that point, thank you.
Okay, alright, we'll do, thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you.
Um Rick, you're on next.
Okay, well, we got uh two quotes for the uh seventy four story courthouse remodel. And if you see at the beginning of that, that is a list that I give both companies for what we wanted done there, so there's all the same page. On what, you know, they've been on. And uh later, I'm out with a. You know, it was all separated in zones. How many zones ordered in total or? Uh four for Keener. And then Montgomery was a few more because of price. Well, it was quite a bit more, then we had to stay under the zoning price. That's what we repair the the little line sets went out. Yes, that's what she wanted to see if she can get that. Ordered as well for the after the remodel is done, to have the furniture, new dozen chairs. I'm making motion to go with Keener Construction. With addition of the furniture.
As far as that price put us ahead on.
Keener is one sixty nine, two fifty. Gummers three sixty seven.
Yeah, Montgomery's three sixty seven.
The furniture is twelve thousand thirty nine.
We use um. Well, lost revenue category of Arba funds to pay for this. Or.
You can, but he just needs to go to the county and get a review.
Right. I mean, unless you wanted to pay it out of a different fund.
It really don't matter to me as long as we get it going, I don't care what we pay that.
I mean, unless like. Do we have another fund in mind to use for this?
Seated.
Seated.
Yeah, cuz that would be, I mean, it's an asset to.
Really either or, because no matter what, the council's gonna have to.
Yeah.
Be either one.
I think I'd rather see it come out of seated.
Okay.
Just because that's where we always dump money in the buildings, you know, fix it and stuff, so.
Are you wanting to pay the furniture out of seated too or that out of um Arber and Kim Cap?
I'd rather keep that separate. But it won't complete Kim Cap so much.
Right.
We'll take that out of Arba, I would say. That sound good.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll have those. Well, those request to council tonight.
Yeah, we can, if somebody's gonna, well, um. Are you available to stay till four thirty? Okay, yeah.
I'll probably sit in two more.
Oh, can you have your copies for the council too?
Once again, you gotta work with the judge on the. Make sure he don't have a big. And I also uh talk with uh Chad that he would would wouldn't know if he could have have all the money down, get all the equipment. That we wouldn't have to sit here and wait. For zoning.
Alright.
Yes, that way she can order all of it and maybe use the warehouse for your storage for that. I would be okay with it. It made a lot easier cuz if he had to make money. Then we'd be waiting to pay out, you know, so.
Is there any type of, I mean, documentation that we, you know, show that they get half of it, you know, and they're.
It's fine, if if you guys um. If you're gonna, it can be kinda like a utility um payment, so basically, you know, there are things we pay ahead of time. Like utilities and stuff that, you know, during payments, like stuff like that, that you guys reconcile at your next meeting.
Well, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we pay them the half and then.
That's.
The rest is at the end of the.
Yeah, yeah. I think we should be able to do per zone, you know, fifty percent per zone.
Yeah, so get one zone done and. I mean, pay that zone off or whatever, you know.
Well, he would like to have it all, that way you can order all the equipment. For the complete job compared to one zone.
Go half down and he don't, he gets paid off.
Yeah, is that what you're saying? He's wanting half of all zones.
Half of the complete total payment, so.
But then each zone as it's completed. Then on each zone, he will get paid the other half. You know that, Rach?
Yeah. I just need a.
Go ahead, I'm gonna make that motion.
And I'll say it. All in favor.
Bring Javier the furniture for two tonight too.
Yeah, definitely needs.
Their motion approved the payroll claims in the amount of two hundred and ninety nine thousand seven hundred. Twenty six dollars and ninety two cents.
So moved. All those in favor.
Their motion approved the vendor claims in the amount of six hundred eighty five thousand three hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty one cents.
Second.
All in favor. Their motion approved the minutes from Monday, no, or Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty three and Monday, November sixth, twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Alls in favor.
We have uh CBC board appointment. What was the email I see on that?
Wow, it's for um. They were requesting. A Stephanie Neal.
What was there, is this, I think we never just, I think never populated, yeah, there was.
We um you guys appointed whoever they asked for at the beginning of the year, but there's still some open spots. Uh we advertised it with WKVI a couple times and just.
I think that's the most we've ever had on that. Or I got it, we didn't read it.
And what I understand in email, they're wanting, so she's actually from Porter County, but Porter County deals a lot with Airbnbs. So they're wanting her to be on the board to kinda um go over the Airbnb that pass like includes.
So I think, yeah, the only something on the back, they could be in B or whatever. But Stephanie Neal, is there a motion to appoint her to that board? Second.
Second.
All in favor. Then the highway business, uh. We had a. There was a letter from Dan Diaper for resignation. Um we had to accept the.
I think the motion noted, except the.
All in favor. Then I guess with that, we. Would like to make uh Rachel O'Strike the interim superintendent.
Now second.
Was there a motion?
Yeah, I thought you would, yeah, I'll make a motion, Rachel. Stay in there until further notice.
There a second?
If you make it.
I'll second, all's in favor. Past week, I've been out there. How's that wind?
Very good, we're um we're ready for winter now. Remember when Rick came to the commissioners and he said I, we're ready for the snow and then it snowed like twenty inches.
That's going to happen this week, isn't it? They're calling today.
I just have a few things that I'm cleaning up out for um highway department. The CCMG twenty twenty three dash two, um they applied for a chip seal program. So it's a twenty five seventy five matching grant, what we're gonna be responsible for is about forty thousand dollars and that's gonna come out of. Seated roads and bridges in twenty twenty four, so I just need to get this assigned for that chip seal program. In that paperwork are the roads that they're doing as well.
We need an additional motion for approval.
No, it was already approved, the twenty twenty three dash two was already approved.
This is just part of what was approved in the application, okay.
So basically, they're going to, um we'll send this out today and then they're gonna advertise it and then your second meeting in December, you'll open bids for it.
How many miles, how many miles was that?
I'm not sure, but I'll find out. So the um. Note for grant is up for grants, it is a notice of funding availability for the federal bridge program. Um so this is federal funding, it would be an eighty twenty match, this is what Dan had talked about for Bridge thirteen. Um so in your paperwork, on the second page, it kinda showing you. This total project cost would be six hundred and five thousand dollars, but um that project actually. Like the letting for the bridge wouldn't even happen till twenty twenty nine, but because it's a federal program, it takes so long to. Designing both through everything, the um two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and six. Thousand four hundred dollars, but they don't think we're gonna need any utility relocation, so we're probably not gonna need that. And then the three hundred nine thousand six hundred dollars for construction inspection. Um when you're doing federal funding, it's actually required that you have to use a consultant for construction inspection. So we wouldn't be able to uh. Cut that cost at all, this is the woodbridge. Cut that cost at all. This is the Woodbridge on Six Iron North over to the Robbins Ditch. Um, the prices are inflated for twenty twenty-nine and there is a contingency plan in place. Um, the first week in February, we would be notified if we got the grant and. I'm gonna be going to the council tonight to um ask for four hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven twenty to be allocated for twenty twenty-nine because. Even though we get seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, every year out of seated, it doesn't mean that's gonna continue. So um we would want that set in stone. It's who knows who's gonna be here in twenty twenty-nine.
And yeah, and we've already had to do this for a project in twenty twenty-eight anyway.
Yeah, and that they actually, so this is the exact same project, they just didn't get it.
Okay.
So yeah, exact same thing. Yep. Hopefully, they get it. But I do need approval from the Board of Commissioners to basically move forward with the grant. And then I would need you to sign this page if you are.
What second? All in favor.
Last but not least, um, I didn't make another copy, but you got the highway. So these are bills that are um. Outstanding right now at the Highway Department. I have them here. If you want to look at them, I just didn't make copies. You know, bring another tree. So it's about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
That one, I know.
Yeah.
This is in addition to what was additionally appropriated last month?
Yes, sir. Um, the biggest portion of the bill is the.
Central.
Yes, it that in that was. Uh, a twenty twenty-three dash one project, which was done earlier this year. Basically, the amount in seated for roads and bridges was over expended, so um. We can't pay that remaining amount. Uh, for that project. Yeah, so I am going, so I talked to council members. The majority of them I talked to. They are willing to um try to help us get out of debt in that department. Um, by the use of ARPA and or, I mean, you could use. See, our, our is probably the best place for that, but um it would need your approval as well and. Even if you didn't want to approve the full amount, any amount without, um, we have about nine hundred and.
Nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Yes, you still have sixty-six thousand remaining that hasn't been allocated. You have one million dollars left in infrastructure. About two hundred thousand dollars left in community projects. And then, yeah, that nine hundred and some thousand for lost.
I think it's no possible to pay it all if we did the council agrees.
Yeah, say agree to it, I mean.
I hadn't been receiving. Predator calls at the auditor's office yet, but those started last Thursday and Friday. I have been getting. Some calls in the auditor's office. Which is um not good if it's coming to the auditor. Um, I. A lot of, a lot of the reason that they were overextended was for, um, there are far more than a lot of vehicles out. Um, we're not gonna be farming anything out anymore. We're gonna be fixing everything um ourselves unless we absolutely.
Or we come back to like, we need. It's computers to read the newer trucks. And I mean, there's always gonna be a tool or something that we need, so. So I mean, I mean, if we get a lot of enough newer trucks, we're gonna have to. Get it.
They do have, so they did get um a virtual computer this year from Diesel Laptops. Uh, I believe it does internationally freight liner. I don't know if the earth, no Cummings and where the engines. I think it does cat. I haven't heard them talk about if it does Cummings yet. But um, so they can, they are set up right now to do minimal readings. Uh, we're still working with Diesel laptops because there's been enough permissions that need to be put in place and um. Few more trainings that need to be done.
Yeah, I think that's probably a big thing to get them trained. Maintenance or what do you? So is that where you guys want to pull it out of ARPA then?
Make a motion to. Pay it all if possible, the council go with it.
I'll second that.
All's in favor.
Better to catch it now than.
Yes, so um, the cat loader is down right now. It needs new transmission. Um, training costs about ten thousand dollars. But that's the only loader that we have that has force on, so um.
Would you? Would you check and see if somebody will prefab them so they'll fit heavy load?
Yeah. Yeah, I can check into that. The Deuce on loader, um, it doesn't have forks, but uh that, that was actually, we're getting that back up and running.
The cat one or?
The Deuce on, we're getting back up and running, but the cat needs the transmission. Uh, the Deuce, I don't remember what was wrong with it, but it was down for a while.
Cause that cat's the oldest.
Yes.
One out there.
Yes, and right now the cat will actually work. It's just once it starts getting heated up, it'll quit. So I mean, you could, like, we can go out there and if we need a load of pulver onto the trucks, you know, we have before, we can still do that. It's just getting. You just can't use it very long.
Right, and it could prefab them. Any loader could go.
And then we have a baby loader out there that wasn't out there when I was out there years ago, but I'm meeting with, right now it's being rented. It has been rented for about four months. Um, I'm meeting with that guy tomorrow morning to see. The terms and everything of that rental contract.
Deer or whatever.
John deer, yeah, yeah, the small one.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. I know what you're talking about. Uh, you have anything else for us? I don't. Nope. That's been Rachel. Name one from the public have anything for us?
Yes, for. I have a question. Um. In looking at the tax abatements, so the only one that I can find so far is that Gunsbridge put in for their. Tax abatement. Where is the pay-for worker? Where can we see how we're getting? Paid by each. So again, with tax abatement in lieu of the. The taxes, what we're getting is a megawatt, a megawatt payout to the county. Where is that? Like, what paperwork is that in?
So um, the, so there's two portions to each property. You have the real estate portion, then you have the personal property. They receive the abatements on a personal property, but not the real estate portion. The real estate portion is kind of um what affects your tax rates. How they go up and down because. The more assessment you have in your area, the lower the tax.
Okay.
Um, but it, I mean, it's depending on the dollar. Like, you don't know, is it too much?
Hey, Rachel? Um, I just was gonna let everybody know too that I posted the minutes from March twenty-first on their page. Um, from the council where we kind of just broke out the. Um, the dollar amounts, um, but the aggregate amount, if it stays at, cause I, I know what the Roberta's second part of her question was though, just. On what it's earning, the aggregate amount is six million, four hundred and eighty thousand. Paid on fifteen installments of four hundred and thirty-two thousand. Um, and but if, if it makes more, that's based on a hundred and forty-four megawatts. So if it makes more power, which hopefully it will. We also get paid the premium on, you know, additional power that might come from. Just better yield than what they expected or um additional panels that might go in, quote unquote, in the fence.
So that, that is all in the ERA agreement. You can come up to my, my office and get a copy or it's on our ordinance section online. On our website.
Okay.
And they're all listed on, so Mammoth is on there, um, Next Air is on there.
And his mam have done theirs yet?
Done.
Well, their paperwork for the tax abatement, cause the only one that I, they did.
Yeah, but it's not till, um, it's twenty twenty. For page twenty, twenty-five, I believe. Not twenty twenty-three, but twenty twenty-four.
So if they're up and running in twenty twenty. So whatever there might be connected, we won't see anything until twenty twenty-four on that because they haven't.
Right, doing it. Because uh, we're always here behind and paying taxes, personal taxes, real estate taxes, so. They're not really on their personal property, nothing is being generated that's just maybe twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five.
Pay twenty twenty-five, right.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then my last question for today is, where does the permit money go? So we already collected all this money from the permit and I, my understanding, what I heard was some of it went to the building. Planning department, that the rest of it was being put in a different fund.
Um, it all goes to the planning commission.
Okay.
They, uh, the planning commission has, uh, they have a couple of different funds. They have county general. That permit money goes into and then they also have their um penalty funds, so like if. Say, you know, they find a something wrong out there and they find you, that, that's a separate fund. So the permit money is all planned.
Thank you.
That's all you have then?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything for us?
Okay, say one more thing.
Yes.
Um, the, so any money that the um. Government collects, we can print reports to show what has come in. It'll. It'll give you like a date and a amount, and then you would actually have to go to that department and say, okay, I see you collected six hundred dollars for permits. And on this day, can you tell me what permits those go to?
Okay.
How, how detailed does the information get that gets published to Gateway?
Uh, just, it's just the um, the amounts, the dates, revenue and expenditures. To go into detail for those, those things you have to actually pull claims and. So in my office is where you would actually find the exact detail to each number.
So I would just come to your office.
So anyone else have anything for us?
I do.
Yes, sir, can you say your name?
Uh, Robert Galen. I'm here with a few of my neighbors from uh, Boerchord subdivision by Bass Lake to talk about the road conditions. We've been asking about it for a long, long time and I talked to Dan Diaper, but I understand he's stepping down. Um, for consideration for repair or replacement, re- repaving. There's been a few things done here and there, but the patching just doesn't hold up. In front of my house, especially when it rains. It floods completely, the, the pavement's falling apart. There are many, many areas in our subdivision that are falling apart.
So that's, yeah, that sounds familiar and we were. I had been led to believe that it, some of that had been addressed in concert with the. Uh, with the conservation district that they have out there. There's, there's some. Overlap between, you know, responsibilities uncovering drainage.
Yeah, that's always fun. So the, the, of course, the season for paving is over right now, but um, I can, we're, I'll be working with the Board of Commissioners. They're all for paving, paving projects next year and I'll definitely put this down and we can just remind me about it too when it's about March.
Well, I've been calling since March.
Okay, okay.
Over, over and over.
We're not trying to push you off.
I just wanted to come and say it out in front of you guys.
Thank you for that.
I've been, you know, I've gone to home there twenty-one years and nothing's really changed and it's just falling apart.
Right. Most duly noted. Yes, sir.
Part of the Boerchord. Um, it was about four years ago, there was uh. Conversations with the road commissioner at the time then and said, well, if you want us to turn and chip all the roads. You know, we can do that like right now, but if you wanna wait three years, we'll pave them. It was a verbal. Thing, you know, should have been in writing, but it's, you know, people have said things and made promises. That were obviously never kept and the conditions have just degraded quite a bit.
Yeah, that was, it sounds like something that didn't survive. Transition from one superintendent to another.
Right, cause it's kind of been going on for about fourteen years, actually. It started after the sewer project, which was in the nineties. And it, it just keeps getting. Pushed out and you have to let us know next year and then next year and.
Sounds like we're.
There's been kind of a lot.
Yeah. No, something we'll definitely take a look at, see what we can do with it, so.
And it's, yeah, some of the roads are pretty bad. When you walk on the roads, you can bounce up and down on some of the. Roads and then they're just start, it's just starting to come right out from underneath the roads. It's getting pretty bad now. They're not gonna be there for long and it'll be.
Soon as you take the blouse to it this winter, it's gonna be a mess.
That'll finish it off.
Yes.
Well, we'll definitely check into it, see what we come up with the next year, so. Yes, sir.
Michael, I'm part of this group also, so since, you know, I understand how different superintendents stuff it gets kicked. Off the schedule or whatever. Is there a way to get it on the agenda or make them, you know, so that it? Can certainly get addressed.
Right, well, we're putting, well, we'll be putting a plan together, what roads will get paved and stuff, so we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And see what we can do to it to keep it, get it up to par, so.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll definitely, it's on the, it'll be on the list, so.
Thank you.
Dan, Dan did say you're doing the Pazer rating this month.
So um, the patient ratings are due to LTAP. LTAP is um, uh. Funded by Purdue University that helps highway departments out in cities and towns um. For their planning for anything to do with. Um, though, Pazer rating will do once every two years, um. They were not started in time this year to finish by the due date of November thirtieth. So we're using our Pazer ratings from last year, but next year for sure, um, the employees out there are gonna start it. Quite early to get a full. Pazer rating in for twenty twenty-four. But the um, Pazer rating is not on the only thing that goes into the, the weather. Yeah, what does that entail?
Well, that's what we were told it depended on.
The Pazer ratings. It does, I mean, it does a little bit, but not, that's not.
I think it was five years ago, that's what we were told. Is our, we weren't ready.
Yeah, good enough and.
Six years ago, they were told if. Um, if they chip and seal, then that would set us away from being paved for. Six years or so, so it was waived that we would get chip and seal because the last time it was chip and sealed, there was something wrong with the mixture. And it was all in our yards and they had to get the. Prisoners out and they, you know, had to grab a lot of our yards, but we kept getting pushed off because of the Pazer rating. And now it's eight years later. It is just what, you know, it's, yeah, we.
So normally.
Quite upset, cause it got.
Yeah, normal after we pave a road, you do have to chip seal it um, the next year and the year after to pres- preserve the pavement. But Boerchords is not really ideal for chip seal because chip seal um, runs on the traffic. Yeah, right. You guys just don't have a lot of.
No.
Getting there to pack it down.
Well, and that's part of why we kept getting pushed out, I think, because. I don't know. I don't know why it is, but.
We'll definitely take a look at it. Now that you've, now that you've brought our attention, we can make sure it gets. Taken care of in a more timely manner. There's more and more of us that look full time.
Right. So it makes more. I guess.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention, Lawrence.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other business for us?
Motion adjourned.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Mark Corley. Oh, Donnie, being. She's also on her in the interim highway.
Well, I just have a higher taking than other jobs. November, December, January.